Hearing started. This is um about the tree on Cemetery Street, not the project on East Avenue or the building. That's there now. It's it's about the tree. So as long as we keep that in mind, this should go smoothly. The first protest that I received after the tree was posted, which was um was posted on August twenty seven, two thousand twenty five. And the first protest I received on it was um September fifth. From Kat Anderson and uh. There you go. And uh Rosalie Canosa. Um and then there were two additional uh protests within the ten day protesting period. Just to explain the process, anytime a city tree is taken down for any other reason, then it's defective. Um it has to be posted. And in that posting period, any resident has the legal right to protest that posting within ten days. Uh which prompts a public hearing if someone protested. That's where we are now. After the hearing, I have three days to give a decision. Whether the tree comes down or stays up. And um the four people that protested the tree. Um it's really, the state law says, the cat Anderson, you can appeal to State Superior Court. My my decision uh within ten days of me giving. Um so with that said, um we followed the ordinance that was uh that we have in place and state tree law. That's why the tree was posted. Um over the last several years, um there have been many hearings and public speaking sessions and council presentations that show this project. Um and it's my understanding that in that process, the tree was scheduled to come down right from the very beginning. Um and it was based on the state's drainage project or whatever project got to that intersection first, from my understanding, but I'm gonna let Vanessa speak to that.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, sorry. Um one thing, uh we have your council district representative, Anne Weather, um Stan. And and she would like to say a brief statement. She has another meeting to go to, so I'm gonna suspend the the regular rules of let us speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you, Chris. Um I just wanted to say a few words. This whole meeting, who is the other district state representative? Can't be here tonight. She is out of town, but um she and I both felt very passionately that we wanted to express our support for all of you here. Speaking out about uh what the decision that's gonna be made about this tree. So this is a short statement that we prepared. We want to begin by saying that we are deeply passionate about this tree. And we are very concerned with as as is the community about this matter. The oak tree is not just a tree. It is a living part of our history, our environment, and the character of East Norwalk. We have a responsibility to you, our constituents, to ensure that if there is an alternative to removing this tree, it will be explored. I'm here to say, if this tree can be saved, if there's anything at all we can do, we should do it. This tree and the benefits it provides cannot simply be replaced. I've learned from listening to many of you from answering your emails this week in particular, that this tree provides a sense of emotional rootedness that makes it not only a landmark, but it connects generations of East Norwalkers. Nicole and I urge you all to fully exhaust every possible alternative before removal is considered. We absolutely must find a balance between progress and preservation and do everything we can to honor both the needs of the city, which we'll be talking about today, and the voices of the people. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
There's a lot of people in the hall that can't get in here.
Yeah.
I think we need to get work here, say, and move up.
All right. You shouldn't do that. All right, um we're gonna move forward after that. I I know that it's cramped. I am sorry for that. Um Vanessa?
Sure. No, I'll 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 be, it can be something else.
I don't mind standing.
Yeah. I'm gonna give you this chairs.
Yeah.
Well, people.
Yeah. Good job, good job, Kat. Yeah, a little bit, but I think, yeah. You only brought awareness. Is what happened.
Some of the chairs that are on the floor, man.
Thanks, I'm blocking.
Of course. I don't come easy. We make it look easy.
Okay, so so first I I want to apologize. This is the only room that we have available uh tonight. Unfortunately, the community room is another meeting is is there tonight. That's why the reason that unfortunately, this is the biggest room that we have available here. Uh usually, we try to move things to the community room and we know there will be a little more uh people. Um so I just, again, I just wanna kind of uh pretty much address the reason why uh the tree has should be posted for removal. Um and as Chris said, um this is not related to kind of to development or nothing. It's really related, really focus on the reason that we had to post the tree. For those that had no do not know me, so I'm Vanessa Valandaris. I'm the chief of operations and public works. And I've been working with the city for fifteen years now. Um before I became the chief, I was also the principal uh of the engineering department. And that's when really, a lot of my background with this project started because as a civil engineer, um I am the one that have been working close with Connecticut DOT in this past seven, eight years with the project related under the the Walk Bridge umbrella. Um these, and I've been to few times a day in a meeting to try to give you guys an update and also explain how that whole project works. So the East Avenue portion of the project is quite complex because ended up getting broke down into three, four different projects. But originally, that project about twenty years ago was really to uh was called East Ave Avenue Roadway Improvements. Where we will improve East Avenue uh. I was a city project about ten years ago. By then I was not even here. Eventually, when the Walk Bridge came, uh they were able to really get that project as part of their umbrella. We were able to ask them to really include that portion of the project under the whole umbrella that they had. We had by then already a design done because uh we we host that project under us. And when they took that project with them and knowing all the upgrade that may need to happen, where is the train station? We begged them to also include as part of the scope uh improvement to the drainage in the area. For those that has been in East Norwalk for many years, you know that that area right under the bridge floods a lot. We have major flooding issues in East Norwalk. Um eh the last few times hasn't been as bad. We haven't seen as many uh storms as we saw about four years ago. But it is really flood to the point that we cannot have any cars crossing through. And I know that a lot of you have witnessed that. So one thing that we asked uh DOT to include as part of the scope was to really improve the drainage in that area. And what happened was that with that, we were able not only to improve capacity, but also improve water quality. Because one thing that it happens before is that all the water one goes through the tracks that dirty water is just coming through straight to the road and is getting being washed out to the sound. With all the improvements that will happen, we're gonna improve also water quality on that. So saying that, when we finalized this whole design about uh four, five years ago, the drainage that is proposed comes down on East Norwalk and connects to a covert and that covert goes to a mill pond. That is the drumming here. Yes. So this one shows exactly what I'm seeing, right? There is a covert here and this black line is the proposed new pipe that will have to be connected to that. So why the pipe is being connected this way? Drainage only works with gravity. We can do a lot of other things with sewer, but with drainage, usually water runs always to the down point. So we have to bring that water that we're bringing up from uh the train station around under the bridge. And then we're bringing down and we need to get it here, right? So this is a structure that is connecting. So when that got designed, you know, the tree that we're talking about is was planted and I'll I'll get more into this right on top of that covert here. So as soon as this pipe would be installed, we already knew that 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 tree and all that vegetation would be totally changed and the tree would be removed. So on the city side, we all always knew that this island was gonna be reconfigured and then also the tree was gonna be removed. We were expect, we were expecting this to happen a couple of years ago because that was the schedule that original, the Walk Bridge was following, that this portion of the project was gonna happen uh about two years ago. There was a change on their plans. And what happened was that this is now gonna get done in the spring. So in the spring, they're gonna be starting doing this portion of what we call the south part of uh East Avenue. We are fin- they are finishing up the other part with the underground utilities and we're gonna, they're gonna be paving uh East Avenue by end of October. That will be paved, so there will be no more bumpies now. And the next spring, they're gonna start working on the drainage. So with that, when we look at saving the tree for engineering reasons, that we cannot, they were not gonna be able to install that pipe that will go about ten feet deep on that location without really uh affecting the health of the tree. So that is one thing that is happening. So for us, the only thing why it's getting posted now is because there will be changes to the island that is happening before this happened. So the drainage itself, that again, it should improve the whole drainage on the area, is really what triggered the tree to be coming down. So why it is happening now and not with the drainage? Because another thing that got approved was there is a whole new reconfiguration of this island. And that new reconfiguration now will has to happen uh now. And and when we, and and when this reconfiguration now is what we are, the contractors removing those curves, I have to go to this other drone. Right. Let me just put it here. So this is the new reconfiguration for uh that area. Um here is, so you guys can. So here we are Cemetery Street, the island that is this here.
Okay.
It is turning into a smaller area here. And by the way, I I just, this is not, again, this has already been approved. This is not something that we did with gonna get approval. This is got approved by, this is also state rule, so if you remember, this is one thirty six. So all this was approved by Connecticut DOT traffic. So what I'm just showing is that on this approved um layout here, this tree is also already out in the middle of the road. That's where the tree is right here. So I I know it's, I should have, we should have highlighted, but I can do with my pen.
Excuse me, I have a question. When I can ask a question.
Uh ju- let me just save my statement because I think that's how kind of how how it is um usually this seems. So the tree.
Can I just ask, if if can anyone at home see this? Is it being heard from a laptop or anything?
I don't know if we have people there, but we can also share the screen. We have those. Um uh Deline, uh do we have people online?
Yes.
We have two people raising their hand.
So just maybe we can just share this drawing, Chris, that that we have. Now wait until. Are you sharing the host screen? Did you go to Zoom and share? Share screens? Yes. And now you picked that one. Now share. So uh so that's why on this new uh reconfiguration that she was presented in a group, that's when the tree goes pretty much in the in the middle of the street, the part is not here. So tho- those were the facts that make us post the tree for removal and not uh uh being able to save it.
Could you speak a little bit please?
No, there there we have any input on the.
This is the smallest room you could actually choose to come to.
This is the biggest room that is available.
Really? Then we should have been downstairs.
There is another meeting. There is a budget. That's why we try.
Right. Hey, um so before we go questions, maybe we do the people that wanna talk. Diane, you wanna go first?
Okay, um. We're gonna stay where I am. I'm gonna be leaving to go to the budget meeting so someone can take my spot. Been in Norfolk for over thirty years. Can't believe that, but I have. Um I will be breached.
I'm sorry, just before anyone speaks, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Diane Lorcella.
Twenty-one Little Fox Lane in Norwalk. But I've lived all over the city in my forty plus years. The first thing I wanted to say is I do appreciate the work that Public Works does, Department of Public Works, GMP. Lot of projects you're doing that are terrific. But in this case, I believe that a lot has changed in the last four to five years about trees. The public and the city is becoming aware of its benefits, its value. The city itself hired their own arborist because we had been tagged, rightly so, that we had the worst free canopy in the western Connecticut town. I applaud the city for starting to take action and the council and all of you and the mayor for that. I first of all wanted to say that I'm sure you knew, and I wanted to thank ENNA and others in Eastern Norwalk Association that brought my attention to it. I go by that tree a lot, but I went by it. I didn't see the sign the days that you had it up. I think you knew, you must have known that this would raise our emotions and our concern. I do believe you could have had it on a different night when you had enough room. And from my understanding, the community room is empty downstairs. So I do, I'm sorry, I, you all are here all day. So I really wish this had been in a bigger room. And you may wanna continue the meeting for those that couldn't make it or get in. That is, if it can happen, I think uh Chris, think about it because there's just too many people here. Thank goodness. It shows you how much we care. I just wanted to say that um Doug Talamay is the king of oak tree history. He is an ecologist. He has many books, Nature's Best Hope, Bringing Nature Home, and the best one is The Nature of Oaks. Chris and all of you and in the hot, in this room and the hallway, please take a look. Google Doug Talamay, T A L L A N Y. Because he talks about the importance of native oak trees. There are keystone species. They harvest wildlife habitat for birds, nine hundred up to nine hundred fifty different caterpillar species. They preserve water. They preserve soil stability and retain moisture. They provide state uh shade in a city like ours that has still a lack. They reduce the ambient temperature of the neighborhood in that area and also the heat island effect. You know these things because this city is finally looking at climate and looking at the environmental changes going on. They also are good for carbon sequestration. There are oak trees. They last up to at times nine hundred years. Amazing. That so that they retain carbon that keeps it out of the atmosphere. Of all the species of trees you could have cut, this one is not it. And you said that that this was gonna take place two years ago, that the plans, and I I believe you. However, things have changed. And so I beg for you to take a look at alternatives. I also want you to work with the guscalas and spinners. If this is being mostly done or part of it, even a part of it's done because of the on-street parking, I permits can be changed. And I believe the city that wants to be.
I'm sorry, Diane, you're approaching your three minutes.
No, I don't know. If we wanna be the greenest city, then we have to be flexible. And this particular tree, I haven't heard that it's so diseased that you must take it down because I've always said, when I've appeared at these hearings, that if it's so diseased and dangerous, of course, you have to take it down. If anything, we should have been feeding it and taking care of it because Sarah Cruz has done a public tree inventory, my understanding. Oak trees in Norwalk are very important to our being and our environment. The ecosystem services that I mentioned about water and the like are valuable. I just didn't have the time, when I heard about this meeting, to show you the thousands of dollars, if not tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars, that this one tree is providing. Unfortunately, in our world, we don't equate what nature does to help us to how valuable a a apartment building is or a or a a bridge work, which is all important too. But I ask that you look for alternatives. And if this just doesn't happen, I will help pass the hat so that the original complainants can go to Superior Court.
Yeah.
And I thank you.
I'm gonna start over here and just work my way like a wave around the room. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I I would like to say I I'm against it coming down. I would think what I would like to see is go back to the state and have them divert their uh their drainage in such a way that that they can do that. And I I'm quite sure the engineering ability is there to do that and not have to go right through the tree and take the tree down. I don't know if that was looked at or done. It looks like they're going on a straight line. They certainly could put a curve in there.
I'm sorry, can we just be sure that everybody's stating their name for the record?
I'm sorry. It's Jack Gray, fifteen Elliott Street.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Sanders. So, yeah, I'm capable of doing that. So uh I did prepare like a little remark and I'll try to be quick. Um I live on Cotter Street. And so this tree is one block from my house. And I agree uh that this is not about the Cemetery Street development, but it is about the character of the neighborhood and the quality of life for those who live there. So with that in mind, I just wanna say a few things. Uh one, this is the only mature uh city-owned street tree in this part of East Norwalk. I think we just have the one. Um this wasn't always the case, but that brings me to the second thing. We've been recently rezoned. Everyone knows that. Uh so the city eliminated setbacks and height restrictions. And now we are losing trees like crazy because developers do have an incentive to deforest their properties in order to build the biggest allowable structures. And it's not just the Cemetery Street project. There's demolition and construction happening all over this neighborhood, and that means trees being cut down. And I wanna be clear that I am saying this as a fan of density. Um I know this will scandalize some of my neighbors here, but I actually really like the Cemetery Street development. I'm sorry. But to paraphrase a late friend of mine who happens to be the creator of Spiderman, with great density comes great responsibility. Uh if Norwalk is going to encourage deforestation of private property in order to achieve growth, it becomes the city's job to maintain and preserve public brain space. And I do understand for Public Works that this plan was always to remove the tree for the drainage project, but by that token, this was always a quiet residential neighborhood with modest single-family homes and a little bank surrounded by mature trees and wetlands. So things have changed. The original plan was made for a neighborhood that just no longer exists. And the city cannot pretend that nothing has changed. We're talking about creating a wound in the landscape and in the community that is not going to heal within the lifetime of anyone in this room. So um that is what I would really like to see the committee reckon with as they're deciding whether or not to remove the tree. Norwalk has been boasting for over a decade about its status as a tree city. And every year we hear from City Hall, the trees are an equity issue and they're important to the well-being of marginalized communities. But this is one of the urban neighborhoods that the city claims to care so much about. A lot of the residents in this part of Norwalk are people of color, working class immigrants. And we're about to lose our only street tree because the city lacks either the imagination or the ambition to consider other options. So I'm asking Norwalk to put its money, which is really our money, that's bare money where its mouth is, um save the tree if you can, but more importantly, please show that your commitment to preserving the history and the beauty of our neighborhood is not just a bunch of successful uses.
Um Chris, can I just add one thing that I I forgot to to say is that
Just good to Chris.
They can't they're asking to stop the screen share because the people on Zoom can't even see who's speaking.
Sure.
Thank you so much. So again, and um just as a data, so I I just want you guys understand that we are we are committed to trees as well. Um Racks and Parks is one of also the the departments that I oversee. And we did a a tree master plan um that we finished last year. So we are really, really into planting trees. So just so you guys understand how this is also important for us. Since two thousand and twenty-one, we planted fifteen hundred trees in this town. What has been a record. Every year we have been begging for more and more money. We were able to get uh a more budget and some grants so we can uh plant more trees. And from these fifteen hundred trees that we planted, a hundred and fifty was just on East Norwalk, not even counting the extra fifty that we did surrounding Marvin Beach. So just to put in perspective, I know that we're talking about uh cutting a big tree here, but also just wanna let you guys know that we do care. And the neighborhood got two hundred trees, new trees in the last uh four years as well. Sorry.
Moving around. Sure.
Thank you.
You need to help get now?
No, I'm I'm good.
Hi. Just interested.
Name and address, okay. My name is Anna Tabashnik. I live at Fort Gilbert Street, right around the corner from the tree that's being removed. I'm also an alternate planning and zoning commissioner. Don't come at me. But do not speak for the commission, and I'm sharing my personal opinions. I reviewed the email that you sent yesterday um with attachments. I have several questions and then feedback. First question, uh when I first reached out to Chris asking why this tree was being removed, he you said that the tree was posted for removal for a reason unknown to him. If there had been a plan to remove this tree due to the East Avenue Roadway Project going back to at least twenty twenty-one, why wouldn't the tree warden have known about it? What is the normal process for notifying the tree warden when a part of city government thinks a tree needs to be removed? Are they supposed to find out at the same time as the public? How often do other parts of the city post a sign on a tree that it will be removed prior to the tree warden being in the loop? And what is the role of the tree advisory committee related to tree removals? Like keep going through the list. I'll public here on agriculture.
Okay, I think you you got the hint of.
Okay, okay. Um I just don't know if it's like.
I just don't know if it's like questioning, okay.
It is not, so people just talk.
It's not questioning, okay, perfect, that's easier. Was there any discussion between DPW, Connecticut DOT, TMP, the tree warden, and/or the arborist between two thousand and twenty-one and now about possible alternative ways to connect the conduit to the culvert that would not require removing the tree? Question three, you answered, thank you. My understanding is that the island reconfiguration is happening in part because of the placement of the new development's driveway and due to TMP goals for improved safety around the cemetery. That the city TMP decides how they want the roadway changed, and then the developer asks the state to approve it, and that the final decision is the state's. Is that correct? I'm shaking, okay. Okay, if the state wasn't going to do the drainage work, which I want them to do, would this tree have to be removed due to the placement of the new development's driveway? If the development had never happened, and there was no driveway, and we lived with an abandoned bank parking lot, but the drainage improvements were still going to be done, would there have been another way to connect the conduit to the box culvert without removing the tree? Meaning, is the fact of the new development in any way constraining possible alternative ways to connect the conduit to the box culvert? At this point, is there another, no, that takes time. Is, at this point, is there another way to connect the conduit to the box culvert without reducing the tree? Could a point of articulation be added to the conduit, like maybe at this manhole cover, and then it be brought and connect closer to the sidewalk or something like that? Since clearly you can articulate and bend these strings that you see there. And I have a sketch. Can you share, I know you did this cool thing where you're holding them like side by side. Can you share updated drainage plans that reflect the new island reconfiguration from August two thousand and twenty-five? So that they're like both up to date and we can see it together. In the May twelfth Public Works Committee meeting where you explained this reconfiguration based on the state's final approval, there really wasn't any discussion of the need to remove the tree. It was about getting new construction specs, right? Are there earlier public meetings that we could watch of any common council committees where the need to remove it was discussed?
I'm sorry, you're approaching your three minutes?
Okay, I'm gonna skip to the end, but I did email it to you. Okay, skip to the end. As I'm sure you know, the mature and healthy tree is a beautiful part of our neighborhood, provides shade and cooling and is a habitat for many species. I feel strongly that it should not come down unless it is disease-rotted or causing some other hazard that cannot be mitigated. Fully supportive of the drainage and roadway improvements, and I know the development driveway is not moving. Nothing is going to change there, but I beg you to please explore all alternative options for the connection to the culvert. Norwalk has a well-earned reputation of conservation and sustainability initiatives. Let this be an example of revitalizing the city while preserving the environment.
Just so you know, all of this is being taped, so I'm not taking notes, it's not that I'm not listening, it's just that I'll just see your questions after. Next.
Diana Lankowski, thirty-one Cannon Street in Norwalk. Not to reiterate, but I feel confident that the DOT engineers have engineered the Walk Bridge, the East Norwalk Train Station, and excavation of half of East Avenue to this day. If appropriate pressure was applied, could find a solution that would save the tree and provide proper drainage.
Paul Fox, eleven Hanford Place. I just want to say, like, or first of all, I guess, ask, like, I've been to a couple of these tree hearings now, and I'm a little bit confused about how late they are in the process. It seems like these hearings happen after all of the decisions have been made. It seems like if we wanted these hearings to be effective, then we would, we should be having them kind of when the preliminary design is created so that we could consider alternatives without having such a high cost and potentially delaying projects. I feel like this is something that we as a city need to explore more. Secondly, about this project in specific, I find it kind of hard to believe that there are no feasible alternatives to connect the drainage and to reconfigure the intersection that would preserve the tree. Now, maybe they're more expensive, and that's a discussion we can have, or maybe they would take longer or cause more disruption. But I feel like if that's the case, then we need to look at these alternatives and have this discussion. Thank you.
You want to go around the corner before we come back up?
Oh, okay.
Anybody, this side?
Yeah, I just want to.
Do you say your name and your address, please?
I'm sorry about getting up, it's been a long day and along the floor. Fifteen Sunset Hill Avenue. I just want to add my voice to those and long record saying that I strongly object to this tree being taken down. I want to thank the people in the community who keep track of these things, because I'm afraid I don't. But when it came to my attention, I went over and I looked at the tree. I realized I've driven past that tree countless times on my way to the beach and going around the neighborhood. And I guess we take these things for granted until they're gone, and we find that they're just not replaceable. And this tree is not replaceable, and while we appreciate the efforts of planting new trees, and we do, it'll take many, many years for them to reach the state that this tree has reached. This tree has given so much to our community that we just take for granted, and we shouldn't take it for granted. I want to be part of the community and live in a city where our leaders take into consideration these things. And I want to be a part of a community that really values the environment. And I think that every, every possible avenue should be explored before we make a decision to kill a living organism, right? That has given us so much and could potentially give so much to generations to come.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Jim Anderson, two Oldwell Court. Pretty much across the street from the street. So this decision was made years ago. And the fact of the matter is, the adjourning plumbing and piping is already in set, already in the monstrosity's complex. So you're set on one side of where you need to connect to to go to Mill Farm. Unfortunately, it's right below the street. Moving it five or ten feet away, the tree's probably not going to last, you're going to have to cut roots. So the true fact, and I think we all should probably accept it, is that the trees are gone. If they are going to go in that pan. And again, if they move it any other direction, token, how big is the pipe, twelve inches?
Thirty. Thirty-two inches, yes. But the tree is already, just, I'm sorry, just to clarify, not that I'm answering directly. The tree, we do not know who planted the tree. That was already kind of one of the issues that we were having, right? Those islands, remember that sometimes we had some neighborhoods or sometimes some business that they care of those islands. Now we have a process in place, but so someone went there and planted a tree, whatever they thought that would be the right spot to plant it. And unfortunately, it is in a bad spot because it's sitting right on top of the culvert. Besides that, there is, we are now facing an issue with the size of the island. Because with the whole reconfiguration of the island, we don't have enough buffer for safety reasons for the cars, even like with a truck now. We measured, that was one thing that we were thinking, maybe if we prune, we don't have enough clearance that we can get even a truck now coming down. So I just want to kind of just clarify that, but I'm sorry that I interrupt your line of talk.
So I guess, so moving the tree at this point, doesn't look like it's going to be, not removing it, doesn't look like it's going to be an option. Relocating it is out of the question. Planting a new tree, possibly the same size, in lieu of removing the tree, would be probably the least expensive, where I don't know. But I know this decision was made, as everyone knows, about three weeks ago.
Folks in the hallway, too.
Okay, try to get their in-room and then we can swap out.
There was that lady, right?
I'm Cindy Schayer, I live on Fifty-two Thirty Road East, I grew up. I was born in Norwalk and I'm looking for bridges, things in place. So my question to you is, you're planting a lot of trees, what kind of trees are you planting? Oak trees or hardwood, important to our area, and then slow-growing trees. So what kind of trees are you planting to replace, you mentioned how many, and if that's great?
We do plant all native trees. So what we do now, we have a process, and as was mentioned before, we, I'm happy to say that we hired an arborist about a year and a half ago. So there is a whole process of exactly which tree we're planting and where. So what we do is, we go there, first we identify the areas that we most are in need of trees. We also now, as if you guys do not know, there is a process that anyone can request us to plant a tree. We have two actually things that happen. You can ask us to plant a tree in front of your house, where you can also be taking care of the tree on our behalf, or you can suggest places for us to plant the tree. And that's what a lot of the tech does on also helping us really expand the camp. So after that area is identified of where we're going to plant the tree, there is crew that goes out on the site, and then we look at everything. So not only what is around, but what is underground and also what will be above the tree. It's funny, because today I had another meeting with EverSource Electric because I'm pushing back on one easement that they want to take from us. And it's exactly because we have this plan to do all this landscaping in that area. And I told them, we are not allowing you to do this here. And then he said, oh, I may come aerial then. And I said, I will not allow that also, because when those trees ended up being mature, you're going to tell me that I will need to prune because now the trees will be affecting the electrical ones. So anyhow, so just to answer your question that I know that was kind of more technical, that's what we do. We try to look, there is a hole, so between the arborists, the chimp, and we have a list, and we only plant native trees. So we try to figure out what would be the best type of tree to that exact location.
I can add just one thing today too, with all of the work that we do and looking at where we're going to plant it, the overhead, underground utilities, this would not have happened today because we would not have planted it over the top of a box culvert.
We don't believe it is that, because we did a lot of research. We know that this tree may be around twenty, twenty-something years old.
It's over a hundred years.
No, we look at the dramas that we have.
It's not going to get us anywhere. I agree that it's probably more than twenty years old, and there is a replanting plan. Our ordinance calls for an inch or three inches for every inch we take down. But again, I'm sympathizing with you because none of those trees, none of the hundred and fifty trees or two hundred trees that were planted in your neighborhoods are going to grow to maturity in our lifetime or even your grandkids' lifetime, for that matter. So we, I agree with you on that, and I'm not a big fan of the building myself, but the canopy does have to be raised regardless, which is like eight feet. So the tree that you know of as the tree, if it was to stay, the canopy would have to be raised up eight feet.
Because of parking, not the development.
No, no, because of the law, you have to have thirteen feet for a truck to go underneath.
So you're saying because of the road change, you're going to have to, not the way it is today. Right, so we're all against the way you're planning to change the road also.
But we are not, also, let me just clarify. Because again, this is, we're talking about the tree. What are the projects? And I understand that the neighborhood has things related to the project, that doesn't apply to us, you know? What we are here is, I know that when there was everything related to the approval of the development, there were a lot of public meetings where you guys would be able to address whatever were the concerns. But again, what I'm just saying is that here, we are not really, we are not talking about the development, right? This is a public hearing about the reasons why we had to post that tree for removal. Because that's, that's kind of what we are, this is the discussion of how it is. So.
I'm sorry.
All right, Reed Ave, two Roland Avenue. Lives in my house seventy years, my grandkids are fourth generation of my house. I know who's not one. I'm actually the treasurer of the third taxing district, we maintain that island, which is going now. The one question I have, if the road had stayed two lanes, would this have been easier to save the tree? That's all I'm asking.
No, because was because of the drainage, the drainage tree. The drainage tree, the removal of the tree.
Which you could have moved out.
The drone.
So each question raises like five more hints, so let's go with the people that want to speak first, go ahead.
Hi, Marilyn Marino, I live at Four Peacock Drive. So you just said we hired an arborist a year or so ago. So the arborist was not on staff when the Connecticut Department of Transportation, these plans came through. And was the tree tagged for removal and was there public comment around that entire process of the roadway being redone? Did the public have a chance to talk about the tree and any of that before it was approved? Or in fact, the deforestation of the train area?
So when DOT did some of the Walk Bridge presentation, there was some public meetings related to it.
Where they tagged this tree for.
I don't know if I go.
So I'm just saying, like you're saying, these plans were approved, was there public comment when the plans were approved about the tree?
But usually, we don't, there is no, usually there's no public comment when we do some drainage projects. That's, this is really the opportunity, right, is when we go to the construction, is when we really. There are two stages, right? So one is when you're talking about the planning, and one is the development that goes through the PMC. When we have a tree on the right of way, we have to post the tree, and that's what gives you guys the opportunity to come and talk to us.
But I mean, shouldn't it have been posted five years ago when you knew the tree had to come down to approve those plans?
No.
Why not?
You usually only post a tree when you're ready to remove it.
So in other words, you really don't get the comment.
There's a bunch of reasons for that, you can look up, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Chris, I just want to say, I can actually provide some clarification if Vanessa would like, so what this question is, it's up to you.
Yes, you can clarify.
And so at the time that there was like a convergence between the DOT and the work that was going on, and the PMC approval that was for the development that was there, there were multiple iterations of a plan that how the roadway and the traffic were going to be designed. And at one point, that started to shift over as to how we can get, I'm going to say it because it's the truth, how we can get more tractor trailers coming through. When the island came into play, in terms of redesigning a single lane with parking on cemetery for tractor trailer to take the left, the only conversations that happened then were two conversations. One, there was going to be a portion of that island that would have to come out in terms of accommodating the trucks. And second, that the city and the state wouldn't be making any decisions on this until they reviewed all the plans and until an actual application came in from the developer for the encroachment and what needed to be done for their property. ENNA, multiple times, periodically, several months, we'd go back and check, go back and check, go back and check. Nothing had been applied to the state. We checked with the city, we checked with the state, we checked with our representatives, and nothing came in. And so this is why you have a roomful of people now that are just aghast that what we didn't think was happening or a sliver there ended up being what you're talking about today. There was no public conversation about what was happening today. I can also tell you that, and Chris will confirm this, that he also told me he had no idea. But earlier today, I talked with the general, the Assistant General Manager of the third taxing district, Ron Schofield, and they were not aware. And they've been, now, now when they don't own it, but they have maintained that, that island and the tree and the property there. Ron told me for at least the thirty-one years that he'd been there, if not more. So when you're saying that this is a done deal and this is what was approved, there isn't any.
No, I didn't say that. I didn't, no, I just think how, like, when we get, because again, we are, the planning and zoning, when they're approval, and what goes back and forth with how the developer we need to address is one thing. The part that I know that I'm aware. The part that I know that I'm aware was that with the drainage that that would be a major change on that island. That one, I was aware, I was aware that would affect the tree.
And the public was not aware, just so you know.
Okay, moving forward.
See Barclay Cove Avenue. Um, I have two questions. One is the trees that, the. Trees that are planted, the hundred and fifty minus the ones that are at Marvin Beach. Um, that only represents ten percent of the city. And of those trees, pretty much what I've seen are smaller scale trees, nothing like an oak tree. Dogwoods and such. Uh, so that's my first statement. The second one is if this tree needs to be removed. Um, I posted on Facebook, there, there are, are landscape architects who have. Vast knowledge about relocating a tree such as this. And it can be done. It happens all over the world when a city is redesigning roads and. On, you know, faces a grim task of removing a very mature tree. Especially a charter oak that we are the Connecticut, the state of Charter Oak. Um, that, that this tree physically can be moved. And it can be moved and live. And are you willing to go to that and say, we're not gonna cut it down? We're gonna move it to someplace else in East Norwalk. That this community will benefit from.
I don't think the tree can be moved.
Be moved. It can be moved. There. There are architectural.
Costs money.
It costs money. It, it costs money. But you know, if we're talking about redesign, you know, removing or, or changing the sewer. Into the sewer pipe. Maybe the DOT says, let's move the tree. In, into another property and you're shaking your head. This is something that happens all over the world, Europe. Other places in the country, it happens. And that tree can be saved. Please don't kill it.
Hello, Becca Skull, twenty-six Emerson Street. Frequent pedestrians, cyclists and scootler in East Norwalk. My main concern is that that tree currently provides much needed shade for me when I wait a long, long time to cross the street. Because there's so much traffic flowing in each direction. And I'm not convinced that the, this design for a refuge. Does enough to protect pedestrians the way that that big tree does. Also, I appreciate the visual stunningness that it brings to the neighborhood. And to my currently treacherous walks up Cemetery Street to Van Zandt. Thank you.
Loretta Esposito, twenty-eight Emerson Street. I have been watching that monstrosity get built. So you guys shoved it down our throats and didn't listen to anything that we. Asked for, and they just made it bigger and bigger. And now because of that, we're losing. A lane where someone's probably gonna get killed or hit by a car. Because there's gonna be traffic backed up everywhere and you're using the sewers as an excuse to get rid of the island. When the only reason that you're doing it is because that big ugly monstrosity needs a space.
Chris, I just want to say, there's people on Zoom.
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm just trying to get the people, because there's people here too. And the people here, they'd come to the meeting. I'm sorry, the people on Zoom, that they're home. These people are here, so.
On my way here, but the point stands.
Uh, Randy Lynch, five Norvell Road here in Norwalk. Um, if this plan was. You know, papered, like you said it was. Why couldn't the builder of the monstrosity be made aware of? And possibly plan for an alternate place for the drain? Because now it's too late. He's built. The pa- the parking lot's done. So like, this discussion with that builder should have already been done. Because you acknowledged that this has been in the works for over five years and then tabled a little bit. They should have been made aware and said, what can we do that you could build this possible plan into your work? Simple as that. Thank you.
Uh, hi, Matt Silver, uh, two thirty East Adam. Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, I understand the, you know, the need for proper drainage. I mean, flooding is obviously a big problem. But clearly, as we can see, a lot of people really care about this tree. Um, it just really adds to the community and we would like to see it stay if possible.
Claire Jones, seven Studio Lane. Um, I live in Silvermine. I don't live anywhere near the tree. I live as far away from this tree as you possibly can. But I have also seen in my neighborhood, which was very wooded when I moved there twenty years ago. People have moved in and they're cutting their front yards. And I think it's very important because they actually stopped one of the neighbors who came in and was cutting down city trees. With the attitude, it's my property. I can do whatever I want with it. So that's number one. We are losing tree canopy, tree by tree. And these were all. At least seventy-five-year-old trees, because I know the, the grandparents that planted. So it's just one tree. Okay, what's the big deal? It's canopy. We are losing canopy. Right and left, tree by tree. And the walk bridge has been really responsible for a lot of that. Over at exit sixteen, they took down a ton of trees. She had a beautiful view looking out at these green trees and woke up one morning and the trees are all gone because of walkway. Yeah, I live with it. Fine. But this is also, that's one thing, is that we're losing canopy. The other thing I see is. Norwalk needs to fight back with the state when it's ne- when it's necessary. I mean, I, I work with Nancy in Norwalk, you guys might know me for that, but I wrote an article about the EverSource wire under the harbor. We got screwed by them on that. We're, this is a case where I think it's up to our officials to go back to the state and say, no. Anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you for raising that because that was one of the points that I wanted to make. As everybody out there in the city knows, I've been working my whole three terms on changing the attitude about trees in the city of Norwalk. And I truly appreciate how TNP and DPW, Chris and I have had these long conversations about how we started out these conversations. Where you said the trees were liabilities and I was like, I think they're assets. I think we paid for them. And. Chris, to his credit, came around and said, it's true. He said, trees are a movement. And everybody got behind it. Paul couldn't, behind trees forever. Thank you so much for that.
He said, I did a walk all over to talk about underground, overhead. When we got through in ten minutes, she was picking out where we couldn't put them.
He's taught me on wherever that many, where trees can go and where trees can't. But that's my big concern is that we have, this is how Norwalk feels about trees. Thank you all for showing up and letting. And supporting the city in the idea that we love our trees and we want to continue the long lives of some of the trees. Especially this tree that is, my gosh, I think it's older than thirty years. Point is, is that we haven't been able to convince, um, Connecticut dot or EverSource to love trees the way we do. And, you know, this project, it goes back to twenty twenty-one. We didn't, we weren't as advocating for trees as much in twenty twenty-one as we are now in twenty twenty-five. And tell us how we can support you with, um, DOT or with EverSource, because this is a nope. Like, these plans should have shown us that the tree was at risk and we could have, at that time, reworked these plans. I don't think that, um, ConDOT cares about trees the way we do. I, you know, looking at the, uh, at sixteen, it was abomination. They did it in the middle of the night. We were up to it. It was awful. It didn't have to be that way. So we wanna be partnered with you. I hope that there's a way that we can save this tree. Um, sadly, I can tell you that it's really hard to move trees.
I know, it's hard.
Peter Ritteretto, he's, he's on the Tree Alliance, uh, Tree Advisory Committee.
He's also a licensed landscape architect. A licensed landscape architect. I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is two things. One is the tree, but secondly is the island. The island is the landscape that supports the trees and infrastructure. It's part of the lost historic character. So what we're losing here is not just the tree, we're losing that green space. And that's intrinsic to the character of the city water. Now, DOT, we might have been able to negotiate with them a little bit on what was appropriate for that. But, you know, we are where we are. And what I'm seeing here is relocation of green space to the tip of the cemetery. So I see that, but in the recreation of this landscape, if we can't maintain that island, which is characteristic of the city. And we have to be mindful moving forward with other projects, that that is a characteristic of Norwalk, because carriages don't make many returns. And we're losing our, our triangle city water. But that said, it's very difficult with a tree that large. In the mitigation for this, we could look at putting trees eight inch caliper and larger. And then supporting a system that would support those trees, and that includes underground structure, soils and water supply. So there are fixes here. But we certainly have to point out that we've lost something that is not.
It's gonna look like a highway.
Former councilperson, Mr. Bonapont, let's say something.
Thank you. Rich Bonapont, seventeen Park Hill Avenue. Uh, I have some prepared remarks, but they're outdated after all the questions. And the answers that came through. So, I mean, it's, it's obvious that it's a combination of narrowing the road. Um, the drainage that's coming. And I, I don't see any other way around this unless you can reroute the drainage to go down. A different path to end up at the Mill Pond in the first place. If, if you can't go around the roots, then you gotta go through them. So, you know, I hope you can figure out some kind of reconfiguration of the drainage. Uh, I know that. Around a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, Vanessa was good enough to answer a question that Diane Cece and I had about the road. And she said, at this time, the city is, is asking to keep it as two lanes. But somehow that got changed along the way. And, and now, you know, now you gotta deal with a one lane. And I don't know how that happens, but somebody made a decision somewhere and, and I don't know how. But anyway, appreciate you. But I appreciate you putting this public hearing together, taking the arrows.
I wanna get the, the people online real quick. Yeah. Delene, can you start, um, adding the people that are on Zoom?
Mr. Knop, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Alex Knop. I live at thirty-five Fifth Street in East Norwalk. I don't mind saying that the, uh, urban tree program in Norwalk was started when I was mayor and I'm very proud of it. And congratulate everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, I joined with all of my neighbors in urging the DPW. To come up with an alternative drainage plan. I appreciate that the tree is on top of a culvert, but if there is a alternative drainage. Uh, route, then that culvert will no longer need to be a part of the system. I know that while there's been a lot of problems with the DOT and the Walk Bridge, on a few occasions, they have been. Open to public suggestions. I remember being at a meeting about the East Norwalk Train Station. And they, uh, seemed to accept a couple of comments about where to put a canopy and, uh. How to align Fort Point Street and the exit from the train station that we had proposed some years ago. I would just ask Vanessa, uh, have you ever been asked to come up with an alternative drainage plan that could be costed and studied?
No, but you know, again, uh, we.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, it just seems to me that, uh, that at, at a minimum. The department and should work with the state DOT to come up with an alternative plan so we can cost it out. Determine its effectiveness in terms of drainage and perhaps avoid, uh, this, uh, fundamental attack on the. History and character of East Norwalk. Uh, and I wanna thank Diane Cece for all of her work organizing this. And, uh, everybody for coming out tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're unmuted.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, good. Um, one of the things, listening to this, I am very disappointed when the. Uh, you said that this work or study had been approved for five years. And when the development was being discussed, one of the issues that came up quite frequently was drainage. To the Mill Pond. And I'm very disappointed to learn that there was already a plan in place. And we also discussed in depth that the, um, island that the tree is on. And ways to return, preserve it. Uh, and, uh. Also, there was narrowing of cemetery lane, a cemetery down to one lane. Uh, you know, the, the parking and the backups, I was all disgust. And it seems that nobody listened to the public at that point. Because, you know, you're going through this, talking about tearing down something. I mean, the developer had so- sort of put the cemetery as a park. Is that gonna come next? You know, the cemetery is not a park and the island was just not ever meant to be. I mean, it's part and parcel of our community.
Jamie, you're unmuted.
Amy?
Jamie, you are unmuted. Uh, you'll un- need to unmute yourself.
Can you unmute her, Delene?
I'm sorry?
You want to unmute her?
I can, uh, I, I, I did unmute her. She decided herself.
Yeah, we're gonna go forward. I think you had something, right? Yes.
Yeah, my name is Andrew Parsons. I, uh, long time, uh, Norwalk resident that just recently moved over to the border to Westport. Um, I continue to be involved in the community. I am on the board of the, uh, Friends and Prey Party. One thing that didn't get mentioned here, I mean, I, I'm not trying to make your guys' job more difficult. You're obviously trying to solve a problem that's important. Like, we need to. Down our roads and everything. But, um, one thing nobody's mentioned here today so far is just in the last five years, I think we've seen the, uh, encroachment of beach leaf disease. Into Norwalk. And, you know, you guys are doing, you know, great work planting trees, but the thing is, like, we're up against environmental factors that you guys are helping offset. But, you know, we're about to lose a ton of trees. All you guys have to do is just take a walk around Grand Park. Right now, there's a new peach tree that's on the ground every single day. These leaves, they triple up, they fall off, they all look dead at this point. So. I just think that we need to look really carefully. It happened to the ash trees and all that. I don't have to tell you that, Chris. Um. We, we had a terrible loss. It's, it's not easy to deal with. And so I think we just need to be really careful before we just, you know, whether it's thirty years, seventy years, I don't know. But, uh, that tree's been there for a long time. I think we just need to think really carefully before we just say, ah, it's an obstacle. Cut it. That's it. Uh, one question for you, Chris. Uh, when you talk about raising it eight feet to, uh, thirteen feet, um, what are the diameter and the custom need to be made for that? Is it like realistic? You could do that and keep the tree or?
You can't do it all at once, no. You know, it, it should have been done over time, to be honest with you. Um, I, I, I don't think anyone questions the, the process, right? Of the, the tree should have been posted early on and this discussion should have been had before. Plans were approved by whoever did it. Um, so, and, and I agree with you. Between the spotted lantern fly and, and, and the tree of heaven and, um, the pear trees that were planted all over the city that are no good. So it is an oak tree. It's our, our charter tree and we should try to save it. I agree with you. And, and I will exhaust every effort to, to do that.
I, I'm sorry, I have somebody else on Zoom that's on the phone. Um, you are unmuted.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I.
We're, we're waiting for you. All right, Delene, sorry. Gotta let him break free.
You're shell.
Betty, you are unmuted.
Um, hello, um, my name is Betty Bono. I live at thirty-five Fifth Street in Norwalk. And I have lived at this address for approximately forty-one years. As I noted the last time I provided testimony on the traffic circle area around the East Norwalk Historical Cemetery. I have traveled past that tree, um, usually twice a day for the past forty-one years, sometimes more, sometimes less. That means I have gone past that tree approximately twenty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty times. So I'm very familiar with it. It's a beautiful part. So I'm very familiar with it. It's a beautiful part of our heritage of the neighborhood, and it's right next to one of the next to the oldest historical cemetery in our city, which has the remains of Governor Fitch. I have a few points to make. First of all, I do urge a delay in cutting down this mature, healthy oak tree for a number of reasons. First, I believe that further transparency and discussion is required, given the language in our own city code, which notes that trees provide important benefits to the city, including beautification, reduction of urban heat islands, improvement in the air and water quality. They provide oxygen, they impede soil erosion, they aid in water absorption, and the mitigation of stormwater. They ameliorate against potential flooding. This is all language directly from our city code, chapter one twelve, section one twelve dash one. Second, I believe it's relevant that the tree we're talking about is an oak tree. Because as noted by the New York Times and by many scientists, oaks support more life forms than any other type of North American tree. Third, I believe there's been insufficient time to challenge the assertion that removal of the tree is the only means, that one tree, that one spot, the only means by which drainage improvements might be made. And I would note that trees do play a role in assisting with drainage. And last, I've I spent quite a long time trying to find out who requested the removal of the tree and on what basis. And it's difficult at this hearing to rebut or even address any claims made in favor of the tree removal if it's almost impossible to track down until the notice goes up on the tree who initiated, first, who initiated the tree removal process, and second, the rationale for such an action. So given that, I would encourage a postponement of this decision so a fully informed discussion can occur, not one kind of thrown together with people desperately trying to find out information at the last minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bono.
Roberta, you're unmuted.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. I tried to get into the meeting, but I could not sit anywhere. I then waited for the bus, which never came, and took an Uber home, and now I'm here. I'm Roberta Divasegly. I am speaking on behalf of my husband, Charles, and myself. We are at Osborne Avenue in Norwalk. We've been residents here. We've owned our house since oh four, since twenty oh four. First, I want to say that I am very much in support of trying to save this tree, but I also want to say that the time to save this tree was before this construction started. I'm a professional horticulturist. I own and operate a fine landscape gardening company. I have a degree in horticulture from the School of Professional Horticulture at the New York Botanical Gardens. I am not a tree expert. I am not an arborist, but I do understand that compaction greatly impacts trees. The roots of this stately, mature oak are far, go far beyond the drip line. I am concerned, granted, now it's healthy. I don't know how much longer it's going to be healthy. I still say we should try to save it. But man, you know, Norwalk really needs to take a good look at what we're doing to our environment. And it's very unfortunate. It's all unfortunate. Thank you.
Did it for the online one?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Hi, Jamie Daly, one zero one Winfield Street, Norwalk. I'm not gonna say really very much, but I think it's wonderful that so many people are showing up, and I think that means something. And I think there'd probably be a lot more if other people knew about it, too. That I hope you will all look at this as as not something that's inevitable. I mean, we started the meeting by making it sound like this was a done deal, and there was nothing anybody could do. But we're people, the tree's still there, and I think it's important to look at what, look at what other options, knowing that a lot of people care about what's going on and want to save the tree. I'm a mechanical engineer, and we change things on the fly all the time. I think that, you know, a little creativity there, somebody could figure something else out and backtrack a little bit. I don't think it's a good idea to just be rolling through everything and saying there's only one way to do things, and, you know, we have to do it too late, and it's too late, and all that kind of thing. That's what these government meetings are about, is to hear the people, and they're speaking, and everybody for the most part is saying, save the. I think that means something, and I hope that, you know, after this meeting's over, everybody in charge here will take that into consideration. Think that's that's that means something. I used to be on the RTM Westport many years ago, and I went into every meeting I went into with an open mind, having read whatever I needed to in advance, so I listened to the public speak. And I changed my mind on some things as time went on. And this is something where I hope that you guys will do the same. Thanks.
Whoever's on the phone, can you unmute yourself?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. My name's Jack Muscoonis at Thirty-nine Lockwood. And I agree with just about everything that people have said. I mean, let's, I want to just point out some facts. Here's a fact, the tree is still alive. Here's another fact. The the plan, as it exists, to put a drainpipe right underneath it, isn't some gift from, it's not, you know, one of the ten commandments from God. It can be changed. Period. End of story. It can be changed. Here's another fact. None of this would be happening if, as everyone was calling it, the monstrosity, that's a good name, if the monstrosity wasn't built. And there's no question that New York's new Norwalk is overbuilding, and I realize that that's not the purpose of this discussion. But it hearkens back to what's going on on Lockwood Lane right now, where we inadvertently found out that they planned on building sidewalks up our street and got a piece of the plan, and everyone says, well, we're not going to discuss it until the plans are finalized, and then we're going to do the same thing about our street that you're doing about the tree, which is everyone gets a right to complain on a plan that's already set in stone. So I just think that it would behoove the city to, as the last caller said, to think about what's going on here. Thousands of apartments are being built. They're not even occupied yet, and traffic here is already a disaster. That tree is beautiful. I drive by it all the time. There's no reason, none whatsoever, for that tree to be cut down, because drainpipes can be put wherever you want to put them. And the fact that the builder of the quote monstrosity, I don't know what it's called, so we're just calling it monstrosity, over, you know, built way too many units on that small piece of property means that they need, you know, more drainage, more sewage, driveway, et cetera, et cetera. None of that had to happen, but obviously, there's money involved. There's housing involved. There's good reasons and bad reasons for that to have been built. But you know what? The rest of the neighborhood, the tree, the 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 whole the whole feel of the neighborhood doesn't have to be destroyed because you destroyed one empty bank parking lot. Just because that was, that, because that mistake was made, doesn't need to mean that the, that multiple mistakes need to cascade from that first one. So, you know, sit down, hey, you know, take out your AutoCAD and put the pipe in a different place and leave the tree where it is.
Anyone else, Delene?
We have no one else raising their hand online.
Hi, I'm Justin McCardy, ten Branford Street. I'm right around the corner from the tree and have been for a long time. Something came to mind today that I wanted to share. When my two youngest children were about, I don't know, maybe three and five, they would say to me in the fall time, Mom, can we drive through the magic tree tunnel? And they meant the trees on Washington Street that crisscrossed over the top. And when they would change colors and fall, they thought it was something magic we were going to do. There's no magic left. There's nowhere that's like that anymore. They also call this tree the umbrella tree. They're now, we alter, I won't give away my age. Twenty-six, the youngest. So this means a lot to us in our community. And a couple of thoughts that came to mind. I agree with what everybody has said, and I would love to know the answers to so many other questions that were put out. And I too know nothing about this whole procedure, so thank you for bringing it to light. What could be done to make you say, we're not gonna do it, we're gonna save the tree? What's the answer to that question? That's what I would like to know. And then also, I want to share East Norwalk needs a win. Yes. We have, needs a win, right? We're respeaking today. Needs a win badly. We have been treated like ugly stepchildren. Ninety-five and East Norwalk Train Station, which, by the way, I know those trees around that train station may not have been fabulous, but I miss the nests I would see in the same trees every single spring as I wait for the train to go into the city. I miss it. I'm now looking at a gas station and the road and the backs of buildings where it used to be all green and lovely. We're taking, we're stealing this from our community, from our landscape that we love. I grew up in a small apartment in New York City with my mom and dreamt of my children having yard and tree. I couldn't believe when I moved here, I thought, oh my God, I own a freaking tree. This is crazy. And I love them and all the benefits that you all know. I don't have to repeat it. Certainly don't have to tell you guys. And thank you for replenishing, even though we won't enjoy them, nor will our children and probably their children, but I'm glad they're just the same. And I also recognize that this is not your fault, that the procedures and how we make this happen are kind of back ass words. And we should have had this discussion years ago. But I beg of you, people in East Norwalk have been beaten down with all this construction. We feel like our neighborhoods and our homes are being ruined. The value of our properties are gone down, and we're just despondent. Every time I turn the corner and there's another construction truck and things are being knocked down and cut. There weren't trees across the pond today being cut down. It's all the time. I'm telling you, we will put a statue under that damn tree of your face. You saved this. I'm telling you, we will love it. We need this win. And what happens to the money that one cemetery was supposed to give the folks back to East Norwalk? There was a nice chunk of change that they said as part of the deal when they had that expansion. Why doesn't, why don't they pay for raising a tree and moving it? What about that? Where's that money?
For the plans, the new plant.
They owe us money, am I right?
We'd like to know what it would cost to save it or raise it or move it, because there isn't a pot of money. It's twenty-five thousand. It's part of public records. I'm not saying anything. But you can't look up yourself.
Hello?
That needs to be returned to the city as a part of the project that we know deep isn't going to approve. That comes out to, out to the pond. So that's not going to get approved. The money has to come back to the city. We've insisted that it then stay. Actually, they're looking to return it to the developer, but ENNA had already filed that it's got to come back to the city, and it has to be spent within our community, obviously. So.
I don't believe twenty-five thousand's enough to move the tree. Not even close.
But at least, at least it's.
Just in the interest of everyone's time, I know that everyone's busy. I think you had something, right?
Yeah, I believe.
Can you say your name and address?
My name is Amy Murphy, and I live at One Island Drive. And I agree with what everybody said here this evening, and I strongly want to save the tree, and I hope that there is a chance we can do that. However, if we get to that point where it's not savable, I just want to throw in a suggestion that maybe we could make a bench out of that tree to create an asset for East Norwalk that the tree will not live, but will remain in our community and not just have it just thrown away. Have something done with the tree. I want to save the tree. I don't want it to be done. But if we get to that point, it's gonna be very difficult to, like, you can see it happen, but that there's something good happening to the tree.
Yes.
Hello. My name is Lynell Jones. My address is Ten Point Road. I don't live in East Norwalk. First, I do want to thank DPW. Touch a Truck is my favorite event every year, and I'm sorry I'm not there this year, because you always learn something, no matter your age. But without transparency, there is no trust, and too often, decisions about substantial issues are being made in Norwalk without honest transparency. Too often, and I have many examples that ironically include the DOT, the public hears about a deal done that an agreement has been made, actually, long after it was actually made. This isn't about drainage. This is about public trust. Are you surprised residents are shocked, outraged, and skeptical, skeptical, given this is a beautiful and healthy tree? You know what we are spending around town to save trees and plant trees? Are you kidding when you say taking down a beautiful and healthy tree is the best solution? Compared to what? Everything is a function of how it is framed. It can be changed. Change how you frame the question. See the facts, like the public outrage and disbelief that taking down this tree is the best solution, and humbly allow your perspective to change. Trees like this are part of the solution, not the problem. This is a public asset with value. Of course, drainage can be engineered. Has anyone worked on any other solution aside from axing down a perfectly healthy and beautiful tree that brings tremendous environmental value during storms and heat waves? The cheap and easy route of chopping down a tree is the wrong decision. Please listen and take the time to seek new and innovative, mature, tree-friendly, engineered stormwater solutions. Consider the facts, including how important this is to the community, the value of this public asset during storms and during heat waves. Please realize you have a public trust problem, which is why this hearing was called. How many city employees have taken promotions at DOT during negotiations? Whose bottom line are you really being accountable to? Thank you.
Thank you, Xavier. I live at seven Fifth Street, which has been my neighbor for perhaps fifteen years since we moved to North. About ten people in my window, as a good morning to me, good night. I just wish the city would be more honest. I did speak to the local city, they do want the tree gone. And they have given many offers of the trees and the homeowners of the trees. But like I said, the city fans are backed backwards for developers and investors. I work with the zoning department, building department, and I have seen the damages that investors have done to buildings in Washington Street. I have dealt with contractors hands-on, they're saying, don't worry about it. I'll do it with the city. And I wish the mayor would take his time to actually come and address his issues instead of just hanging out at twelve o'clock at night at the station house having a beer. You know, there's better things you can do. And I'm just wondering, do you want the tree to stay? Like, I had it in my neighborhood. I eat with it, sleep with it, and I visit it. I used, we have a love and hate relationship in high school. Maybe I wanted it gone. Now I have a baby. We did take a picture in front of the tree. We did see the signs on the tree. It's just a point. They have already shaved the trees, the ground where the trucks came back into the parking lot. But like I said, the developers have expressed their wanting of the tree down, and the many offers that they have given to Fifth Street for the damage they did. They had done to properties and I just wonder what the conversation was like with Mayor, me and my co-sellers. What deals were made? You know, we'll never know. I just know with my experience, the deal that the city of Norwalk makes with investors. It's just.
Sir?
I'm Dave Roger.
I'm Dave Roger, I live on Hayes Avenue. Vanessa, a question on this, on the, on the drawing, because I didn't know anything about the driving reason being the drainage from the train station area down. It looks, looking at the map, looking at, it looks like if we shift the pipe a few degrees to the east, northeast, that it doesn't have to go directly under the tree, it could be just offset from it. So can't the pipe be moved? It hasn't been dug yet. And the distance from uh, this manhole down to here, you're, you're only talking a couple of degrees change, you're not talking about uh, even new pipe or anything else, couldn't it just be shifted a bit? That's it.
Seeing no one else, um, we did, I did.
Chris, I would like to speak.
One second, yep. I did get thirty-five emails and I'm not sure if the people actually came in addition to, who came and real quick before anyone else leaves, Diane, um, this is positive, powerful energy in this room right now. Like I wish that the mayor had walked by or elected officials and saw waiting, almost standing in the wall, out the door. Honestly, this is powerful and everyone should see it.
We've done this for Jordan, we've done this for so many issues in East Norwalk and we just get, we just get ignored all the time. And like they can't keep the, uh, zoning laws up fast enough for developers to sneak, like they complained, there's nothing we can do about the condos that went on our fleet with a pink bank with, now they're talking about changing the parking on Howard, oh wait, what do you mean? That wasn't part of the discussion, like everything is just.
Diane.
So I, so I will, so Diane C.C. Olmstead plays East Norwalk Neighborhood Association Board. And thank you, everybody for coming and all the people that wrote letters and, um, the communications that you've made and, and taking the time to try to understand this.
Thank you for everything.
Inform, yes, best I can, so, um, this thing is kind of rapid fire and, and ENNA was struggling, as Chris knows, to get, even, even Chris Torrey, our tree warden, did not have the information um, as of a couple of days ago that was issued to us from Vanessa. So it's really been very little time for anyone to take a look at it. Um, I'm not an engineer, I don't play one on TV, but I'd certainly like to consult possibly ENNA, um, consult with um, an outside engineer for, for maybe just to take a look at this, but along that vein, what I wanna say is the tree is not cut down yet and the piping work is not done. So you've heard a lot of the people here say, let's hit the pause button. We're not convinced, although you may be, that every feasible alternative um, to the drainage and saving the tree has really been given its due. And I, we're asking you to go back and take another look at this, work with state and see what can be done. In that vein, I wanted to ask Chris as a point of kind of, um, uh, information here. Is my understanding that an objector or a butt or even ENNA withstanding can waive the three-day, um, decision? Um, if we ask you to do that, or are we still under the statutory?
Still under the statutory, so, so I still have to give my decision in three days from this meeting and you have ten days.
In terms of keeping the comment open, are you able to keep the comment open until Friday and keep, and keep people?
Absolutely, yes.
So, uh, that, so that's number one. We, we would prefer a, a continuation or a postponement, but statutorily, if you're not able to do that. I do wanna say, um, and before I get to the rest of it, I do wanna hand this to you and I'm sorry I couldn't get it over to you. If, if petitions really helped us, there wouldn't be the development in Mill Pond, we know that. But, but nevertheless, we feel it's important for people that have, people to, in any toolkit, to be able to express what their concerns are. And so we did put out a petition through ENNA, um, there's over a hundred and twenty signatures here, this is just from this morning. I, I think it's probably close to two hundred now, but we wanted to submit this to the city. Um, a number of people chose to post anonymously, so we took those off of here. Um, we posted their comments as they were, verbatim, um, if there's any expletives in here, um, I'm sorry about, okay, so we want, we want to, there you go. So we want to submit that, number one.
Thank you.
And then number two, what I wanna say is that the, um, just like, just like you heard, my neighbors here say, sorry about that. This is really adding insult to injury, it's all upon a woman. And, and I know that you don't see the direct connection to Mill Pond, but for the rest of us, like this is like the straw that breaks the camel's back.
Yeah.
And I, and I really think it's kind of disingenuous, really Vanessa, for you to say that there's no link between the two. Because to someone's question over here, what would the development be if that driveway wasn't there? We can tell you, because we know we're planning and zoning, it would have been forty-three units. Okay, that's what it would have been. There wouldn't have been a scale it back campaign at that point. Well, there may have been, but not to, to what we had to do. It is that driveway, it is that massive pipe that goes underneath it that drove the decision of how they were gonna develop that. And then it also tied into the traffic and the reconfiguration of the road. So you may not see the direct connection there, but we all see the direct connection there. And all we're asking you to do is while you still can, before that tree comes down, before the final drainage is done, is to hit the pause button and let's make sure we've ruled out absolutely every feasible alternative. And one that I know that we, then we were trying to do some research at the last minute is that to Vanessa's point where you're talking about engineers have to look at water, it, it is gravity, it has to come downstream. But there's nothing that says it has to go in a straight line. So, so even though the late great Hal Albert, your, one of your predecessors would be turning into the grave right now, talking about making a turn there, it's done all the time, Vanessa, you know that. You, you know that with drainage, with sewer, et cetera, that, that something doesn't have to come in straight. And I'm sure that as, as engineers and all the resources that, that you guys in the state have at your disposal, that you can look at something just as, as, as Dave was suggesting, to either go, you know, to the east of that or the west or whatever you need to do to maybe redirect things and at least try to save the tree. You know, even if you think there's some damage that may not, no, that's gonna come back to haunt us. The other, the, the other thing that I wanna say is that the, the, the timing of this, when you say that it goes back to twenty-twenty-one, the, the flooding and the concerns there, I've been here four years and I've worked with all the city engineers in terms of fixing flooding in East Norwalk. When the city decided to combine the East Avenue Improvement Project with the Walkbridge Project, which by the way, ENNA and most of you opposed the combination of the project, but lost on that too. When they decided to combine those and then they were looking at lowering the road for the Metro North Project, we were told at that time that the, that the drainage was gonna be, um, um, improved and, and the part of that project was going to be at Fort Point where they're going to redesign, which has already been done, as, as I understand it, redesigned all the pumping from Fort Point. So this was never on the radar screen for any of us until twenty, or you, according to the documents, until twenty-twenty-one. What's the other major thing that happened in twenty-twenty-one? To Scala, the developer was meeting with planning and zoning and the city and Public Works and the state for a development that we didn't know yet was, was going to be forthcoming. So, you know, again, there's, there's a connection there. And, you know, given that, give it, given the concern of the community, given what you're hearing from tonight with people on this tree, you know, we're, we're just really begging you, hit the pause button, go back to the state, let them know what happened here, if you wanna have another meeting and have a state down here with ENNA or anyone else, we can talk to them. But let's hit the pause button, go back to the drawing board, see what we can do to save this tree and make sure that we're, that what we are doing with anything there is only in the interest of infrastructure for the city and nothing to do with the development project. Thank you. Next steps, Chris, what, your, can you tell us theoretically what happens if you approve this and if you as the warden deny it?
Well, the next steps is to disseminate and process all the information that I, I heard tonight, because some of the stuff is new to me. As I explained before. So, um, if you have comments or thoughts, I'd love to hear them, because it's not something I'm gonna decide tomorrow or even Friday probably, it probably won't be till Monday, so.
But that's within the three-day window?
The three business days, yeah. Okay, so I'm, I'm saying tonight and then I have Thursday, Friday and Monday um, to talk with Vanessa and talk with Brian and, um, the city leaders and, and see what we can do. And if there's nothing that can be done, then I'm gonna write down what I find. And I hope what I write and what I find, whether to save the tree or the tree has to go, satisfy some of your questions that I've heard tonight, because I also have the same questions.
And, and theoretically, if you were to, as a tree warden, to deny the, the application to, to cut down the tree, what would happen?
Good question, I don't know.
Let's find out. Let's find out. One way to find out what would happen. And that's to hear the appeal.
So.
Have you ever denied something like this?
Uh, I've never approved one, to be honest with you, uh, like to be full transparency, but again, each project is unique and this is certainly, um, in that realm of uniqueness.
Thank you. So can I, just before you guys ask a question, just wanna make a, a little statement, I think that it's on behalf of the whole staff that is here. Again, we, we, um, I always say that I love to hear the complaints. And if we don't, we cannot make it better. And who works with me and who has been in meetings that I've been, um, that I have to present something, I always say that. I, I totally understand the concerns, you know, and again, I'll, believe me, we all like the tree. And before we came here, we were really looking into a lot of things related to the tree. But in, I think that independent of that, um, one thing that we all can take from here, and I think this is, goes back and I think that will be really my job is how we can do our work better. You know, so beyond the tree here, I think that, um, part of it that we could have avoided coming to here is to maybe have done few steps differently. That for whatever reason didn't happen, you know, it can be how maybe that the process is done is how, how it was looked at and all that. But I think that, um, it's always important to have these meetings and I, I think that it's good that we don't need to agree on everything. Because when, if we're in a room that we all agree with the same thing, we don't have new ideas, right? It's when we start disagreeing is that we start thinking of other ways of looking at the same thing. So I think that one thing that I'm definitely gonna take from here today is that what we can do so next time we don't come to this situation, you know? And I think that this is what I'm gonna really wanna bring back to the administration and to my staff and also to my colleagues that works in, in all the departments. Um, what I also wanna finish is that, again, all the staff that is here is committed to Norwalk. Uh, I know that, you know, it is a quarter to eight, we have been here for twelve hours, you know, and we are only on Wednesday, we still have another couple of days and we have a lot of work to get done. Um, and I hope you guys come to our, uh, Public Works, the Chachakom Serbe, you know, is the day that we really try to show what, all the work that our guys do for all of us on every day, but again, that, we're gonna the, the tree warden, uh, role is one on how he's gonna manage that. It's kind of, it's, has nothing to do with my opinion, Paul's opinion, Greg's opinion and all that, he has to make that decision, that's why he is the tree warden. But again, I just wanna show that we are here because we do care, you know, and we are not like making a decision out of nowhere or saying, oh, doesn't matter, we cut the tree, we save the tree. And at least I'm saying from myself, you know, and this is how I am and usually I can answer most of the questions and I try to be very transparent. And if we wouldn't be transparent, we wouldn't be here, you know, at least is how Public Works always try to be. So I appreciate everybody's time, I know everybody has a family, they're hungry, you know, and have better things to do than come here, but I do appreciate, uh, all the input that you guys gave to us tonight.
If this tree got saved, you would get so much attention and then it opened the conversation about how to change this procedure, so we don't put, you put people through this, because it would be done when the plans are originally being made. All of this could be let out in the open, be transparent and we could vote on everything ahead of time, so we don't have to go through this each time. That would be such a gift, it really would be to all of you in Norwalk, because it would change things, how things work.
It would be a gift to me too.
Yes, I'm sure.
So last point of information, point of facts. The city, through by common council, approved the ninety-two thousand dollar engineering study. Do you know what that was about and do you know that obtained two cemeteries? It's a question. Second is, one single family house that's on Birdie Boulevard, opposite this tree. They're gonna put this out on Facebook, there's plans there for the nine-unit. Place like one family, they put a nine-unit family, uh, rental building right there. Now I know in, in the past, the developer and that's the, the tree line that's adjacent to the mason, which is owned by the masons, my neighbors. Uh, they were looking to sell that, it's still on, it's unusable, uh, space. That is a possible, will be bought by that nine-unit developer as an access through Old Wellport. And coming in through the back. Again, referring back to this tree, that tree is, is literally almost opposite that white house.
Yeah.
So, I don't wanna sound like the bearer of bad news. And, uh, we're talking about moving a pipe the size of this table. Okay, thirty inches or less than this table. So it's not easy to shift it one way or the other. Based on the mechanical engineering that I have, there's water flow, there's the gravity. You can't just shift something over on a piece of paper, expect the water flow to, to work. I was on the engineering study for Border Street back in nineteen ninety-one. But that water stream was actually lowered six inches.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, we said the same. We, the electric companies, Samsung Electric, Telco, asked, we all asked, wow, it was flooding out in nineteen ninety-one. And they designed the state, because that is part of the state road. Like people all know that, what's we? They had designed it for a hundred-year flood, I guess what, floods now. And then in the end they count for the additional development that's on Border Street and future development, they have water run, the roof alone. And you replace thirty apartments on Washington Village to now five hundred toilets, washing machines, showers. Just think of that volume of that work. Um, and that drainage, if needed, you have to replace it. So again, going back to the stream, I, I, I honestly.
I'm sorry, you're approaching your three minutes?
Okay, thank you. It's gonna cost somebody at some point. We, the taxpayers, already paid ninety-two thousand dollars. Again, I don't know the specifics of that, where that was spent, I believe it was done for the cemetery street. That's all I'm gonna say, that's it.
Thank you.
Um, I have one more, I'm sorry, Amy, you are unmuted.
Hi, Amy. Amy.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Amy. Um, I don't live in Norwalk, but I do attend the Connecticut State Nor, Community College. And I am just new to environmental science, which is why I'm here. And I just wanted to throw in this question, whether if it's, um, possi, if there's possible ways to integrate the tree with improving the drainage. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
I just wanna say one thing, if this was your neighborhood, would you let all this happen to it? Would it have gotten as far as it has now if you lived here?
I do live in Norwalk, I'm born and raised, I'm not. No, but I've lived in Norwalk, so I, I know the tree and I know the development and I know turn, driving down East Avenue and making the left and seeing Mill Pond, it's not replaceable, it's never coming back. And, and that's unfortunate. So I do, like I'm born and raised in Norwalk, went to Norwalk schools, so I'm not someone that lives in Norwalk making this decision for you guys and I, like I said, this is a, a powerful show out.
Decisions for Norwalk.
I get it.
And that's just wrong.
Actually, the zoning commissioner has to be all, right, and, and zoning doesn't have.
Before I conclude the meeting, does anyone else, you guys can say?
The one thing that we would love for you to take back, when you talked about taking things back, is people don't wanna comment on approved plans. And I've heard this over and over again from, who's the guy in the?
Oh, Steve Clifford.
Oh, that guy.
The developers are there, they work. The developers wanted it. They worked with planning and zoning for eight months. Oh no, maybe you can do this, maybe you can do that. By then, they're in bed together. Then the plan comes to the public and I'm always like, what? And, and it's like, forget it. It's, it's like a done deal and everything.
A million, we're just exhausted. I'm sorry you guys are getting the brunt of it. We, we, and, because we've been turned down on everything. Not when, did we win one thing? No.
How do you win when they're approved already, all the plans?
Not one thing.
I thank everybody for coming out and voicing your concerns and this is what makes Norwalk, Norwalk. Billy, thank you.